We'll call this May 7th meeting of the Cookville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Walmsley.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Joe Roberts from Collage Side Church of Christ, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag.
Let's pray together. Father, we are so grateful for your love for us and for your graciousness and kindness for this nation. We thank you for the men and women who service so well in our communities. I pray your blessings to be with them and guide them with wisdom. Thank you for good neighbors that are willing to help one another out, and thank you for this community that we're blessed to be a part of, be with our families, be with the men and women continue to service in the armed forces and our police forces and that work so well to provide protection in our lives. I pray that your guidance be with these each and every day of our lives. And we ask this through your son's name. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any additions or deletions?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
5A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on April 16, 2015. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion a second. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0150408 amendment to the zoning code relating to banners and other temporary non-premise signs. Mr. Mills. Before you speak, I will say that we'll have the, this will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Mr. Mills will go over that, and then we'll, then we'll close that and then deal with the business portion. So, Mr. Mills, if you'll explain.
Mayor, council members, the proposed amendment would insert provisions to allow banners when attached to decorative light poles when meeting certain or specific conditions, which I've highlighted in the ordinance would be first, it has, it's limited to the name of the establishment. It must be attached to a decorative light pole which is designed to display a banner. No portion of the decorative light pole or the attached banner shall be located within the public right of way. Only one banner per decorative light pole shall be permitted. The decorative light pole must have upper and lower brackets on the side to be utilized to display the banner. The lower bracket has to be at least seven feet above the ground, and no banner can be larger than four and a half square feet in sign face area. And this is a photograph, doesn't show up too well, but this is what we're talking about. This is the decorative light pole with the banner attached. These amendments, or this amendment has been approved by the planning commission unanimously and is recommended by the planning department.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Would anyone like to speak to this matter? All right. We'll close the public hearing portion. Do we have a motion on this?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Discussion among the council. Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7B, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0150409 amendments to the zoning code relating to accessory structures. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, this ordinance was initiated at the request of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it stems from an issue that the Board reviewed earlier this year regarding a metal-sided accessory structure that was granted a building permit as a barn. As a result of that, several proposed amendments to the section 204.8 of the zoning code are proposed. The first, which is in section 202, the definition section, would be to include a new definition, that being for agricultural use. The amendments to section 204.8 are first to insert provisions that specify that no permit may be issued for an accessory structure until the construction of the principal structure has been substantially completed. This relates to standards for determining compatible materials. If the accessory structure is built prior to the principal structure, then it's more difficult for the codes office to determine that. Next would require that accessory structures be located on the same lot as a principal structure, not on a separate lot. The next proposed amendment that was approved by the planning commission was include provisions limiting the number of accessory structures per parcel to no more than two in the RS and RD districts, and we'll revisit that in just a second. And the last proposed change deals with inserting provisions for compatible material requirements. Currently, we do have a standard that accessory structures must be compatible with the principal structure, but it's not well-defined in terms of what is compatible material. These amendments would insert provisions, providing more specifics on how or what is compatible, and would also be clear that barns and other agricultural structures used for active agricultural use would be exempt from these requirements. Let me go back to the proposed restriction on the number of them in a RS and RD districts. I think I was contacted, and I think some of you may have been contacted, by a resident concerned about that requirement. In researching this further, we already have a requirement that limits the amount of the rear yard that can be occupied by accessory structures, that being 30 percent. So, it may be that this section is not necessary. So, when considering that, these recommendations or these proposed amendments were recommended by the planning commission and are conferred and recommended by the planning department.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, again, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Just come to the podium and state your name and address, and you can make a statement of up to three minutes.
Okay. My name is Jim Cobb. My wife and family, and I live at 1495 Sherwood Lane, and I did want to address the council regarding the limit on accessory structures and ask that, my initial recommendation when I contacted council members earlier this week was to make a recommendation that if tracts were larger than one acre or more in size, that the limit of two accessory structures not apply, or that those tracts be exempt if they're greater than one acre or more. But it sounds like maybe, Mr. Mills, you're also making that recommendation that that be withdrawn, or...
I think I would support that if that's what the council chooses to do.
So, we would just ask that council consider tracts one acre or more in size, or that the limit be withdrawn in its entirety regardless of size, based upon, I'm not sure how the 30 percent Mr. Mills mentions applies, but we would certainly be in agreement with that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? All right. We'll close the public hearing portion. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, with the original, under the original scenario.
Do we need to have an amendment or something in order to...
You want to withdraw your, withdraw your second. Do you want to make your motion with how you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that on this ordinance, that we delete the number requirement on this.
All right. Clerk, do you have that written down as properly noted, how the amendment, as stated with...
State it again, please.
To approve this ordinance with the deletion of the number requirement.
And the addition of a 30 percent rule, right?
Well, that is already in the code.
That's already in the code.
All right. So, we have a motion.
Second amendment.
We have a motion, a second. So, now we can have discussion among the council. Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Very good. 7C, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0150410 amendment to the zoning code relating to real estate offices in the University District. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, this ordinance simply amends the zoning code so that real estate offices are a permitted use within the University District, as we talked about at work session earlier this week. It makes sense to allow these when you consider the number of students that are looking for rental properties, so we would recommend approval.
Very good. Once again, we'll open the public hearing portion. Does anyone like to speak on this matter? All right. We'll close the public hearing portion. Do we have a motion on this matter?
Motion.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7D, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0150411 RAO redevelopment area overlay district, zoning for properties located at 319, 339, and 349 West 8th Street, and 340 and 346 West 9th Street, tax map numbers so-and-so. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, this would be, this ordinance would establish the city's fourth RAO. There's a map depicting the locations. You can see it's bisected by Laurel Avenue between West 8th and West 9th Streets, and it's adjacent to the north of the city's first RAO, University Square. The establishment of the overlay was initiated by the property owners, Aaron Bernhardt, Jerry Gahl, and Paul Gahl. A little brief history, our RAO district was created in 2013 for the purpose of serving as a mechanism to encourage redevelopment, revitalization, rehabilitation, and general improvement in areas within the city of Cookville that were identified as being in need of such in our Cookville 2030 Plan. Within RAO districts, the city may waive or modify certain development requirements to provide incentives for redevelopment, including increases in density, reduction of setbacks, reductions of lot sizes. Specific criteria must be met for properties to qualify for RAO zoning, and a detailed process for approval must be followed. Only those uses permitted in the underlying zoning may be permitted in an RAO district, and the developer must submit to and adhere to an approved development plan. The process for approval involves several steps. The first is they must have a consult with the planning department to determine if the area they're looking at is appropriate for RAO. If it's determined that it is appropriate, then they request for the overlay zoning, which would include a written statement describing how the proposed development will occur and how it will meet the requirements or the objectives of the 2030 Plan. The concept plan must include site, floor, and elevation plans, and the planning commission after reviewing would submit to the council. The council would then consider approval of the establishment of the overlay zone. Once the overlay zone's established, then the developer comes back to the planning commission with a final RAO plan, and that must be done within six months after the council approves the establishment of the zone. If not, it goes back to the original zone. And the site we're looking at, again, is off of 9th and 8th. It consists of approximately 1.19 acres, or 51,000, almost 52,000 square feet. It's located entirely within an area identified in the 2030 Plan as being in need of redevelopment or revitalization. The underlying zoning of these properties currently is from the, to the east of Laurel, it's zoned as CL local commercial, and to the west of Laurel, it's zoned as RD single and two-family residential. In conjunction with the request for RAO zoning, the developers have also submitted a request for the closure and abandonment of Laurel Avenue between West 8th and West 9th Streets, which, as you can see, bisects the proposed development. The petitioners either own or have contracts to purchase the properties on both sides of the street. The inclusion of the right of way, if it's acquired, would increase the land area by just under two tenths of an acre and bring the total to 1.38 acres, or just over 60,000 square feet. However, the development also involves the dedication of right of way along West 9th Street, which brings the total back down to 58,815 feet. The primary use of the subject property currently is single-family, multifamily residential. This is a map showing the current uses of the properties. Here's some photographs to show how this development would promote revitalization of the area. These are the structures that would be removed should this development proposal be approved. This is the apartment, five-unit apartment complex, and these are two modular units located at the northwest corner of Laurel and 9th Street. And this is the actual plan that's been submitted, and they've designated this development as Eagle Crossing. They've also submitted all the other requirements, including the written statement, site plan, floor plans, and elevation plans. The application indicates that 11 townhouses, which are single-family attached dwellings, would be constructed on the portion zoned as RD, so these would be the townhouses, and they would also build 10 multifamily dwelling units on the portion that's zoned as CL. Townhouses are permitted use in the RD, and multifamily residential is a permitted use in the CL district. A total of 73 parking spaces are shown, which is four less than required. They submitted a request that this reduced parking be approved as a part of the approval of the RAO. They've indicated that construction would begin within six months and be completed within two years after starting. The floor plans indicate two-story dwellings with kitchens, livings, and dining areas, and with one bedroom and bathroom on the first floor, and one bedroom and bathroom on the second floor. Sidewalks along West 8th and West 9th Streets would be installed. Rain guards would be utilized for stormwater detention instead of detention ponds. As noted, this is a mixture of development, and I want to, in the RAO district, one of the key incentives is the density bonus, but multifamily is not allowed for, not approved for density bonus. So, you have to meet whatever the underlying zoning is, which is what they do here with the, in the portion that's zoned as CL. However, in the portion that's zoned as RD, we're looking at a density bonus, just one under would be allowed under the maximum under the RAO district to allow the 10 units. This proposed RAO plan has been approved by the planning commission and is recommended by the planning department. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Very good. This will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Yes, if you'll come to the lectern and give your name and address, you'll have up to three minutes to speak on this.
Barbara Reynolds, 1750 Heathrow Drive. I'm just wondering what's going to happen to the people who are losing their homes? If these are homes they own, are they going to be compensated adequately? I'm concerned about the people that won't have a home after this all takes place.
These properties were purchased, so they've acquired funds to, if they're owner-occupied, to buy new homes, I would assume. The rental properties, a couple of these were rental. Again, the properties have been purchased, and I don't know what they're doing for housing for rental.
James, Mr. Mills, I remember when the, when the original development came up, that was a question, that was a question I asked, too. You used the word, you know, that was a concern of the planning commission, about gentrification of communities, and it was a whole issue. And I remember, I asked, I specifically asked the developers about this, and they went to, they explained to me the great lengths that they had went to in order to accommodate the folks that were living there with it renting, that were renting, or owners. So, they went to great lengths, and I expect that they have done, have done, and continue to do that with this one.
Mr. Gahl's here if you wanted to directly address that issue. Owner-occupied, I mean, just would be like me or you selling our house.
I mean, obviously, they made a decision to sell. It's not like the property was...
No, there was no condemnation at all.
So, I mean, the people have a choice to sell or not.
That's, that's what has made this, this proposed district the most difficult, is you have to have, there's a minimum size you have to have because we envision this being comprehensive. So, you can imagine how difficult it is to go out and acquire multiple parcels to actually have one of these zones come to fruition.
So, James, the property owners have been paid, they've agreed to a price, and it's been sold? Was there any, any litigation involved with any of them?
Not to mention...
No? Okay.
No. I'm Jerry Gahl. I'll be glad to speak to that. There, all of the properties that we've purchased are vacated. They were all leased properties. We offered the tenants that were living there opportunities to move in some other properties we had, and they chose to move otherwise. There was one property that, there was a gentleman that was deceased, and it was vacant, and his family sold us the property. The property to the west of Laurel is leased. Those two homes there, there's a gentleman that owns those. His sons are living there, and they're graduating in May, as I understand it, or they're making other plans to move elsewhere. So, he has owned that property for a while and has agreed to, and we have a contract purchase said, and he signed the letter requesting this RAO since he still owns it, and we are closing it out at the end of this month. The other house that's east of, all the ones west of Laurel are vacant. The other house that's east of, it's one more, James, that one there, is leased, and it's owned by Stevens Rental, and we have a contract to purchase that, and that gentleman is moving out, and Mr. Stevens has made those arrangements to relocate that person. So, there's no, no issues related to that, and I understand that, and I appreciate your question.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. This will close the public hearing portion. Do we have a motion on this matter?
Motion.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7E, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0150412 closure and abandonment of portion of Laurel Avenue between West 8th and West 9th Street and declaring it as surplus. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, this is directly related to the RAO proposal we just considered. This section of Laurel Avenue is approximately 241 feet in length and has a right of way width of approximately 35 feet. The total land area is, again, just under two tenths, or 0.19 acres. Laurel Avenue currently extends from, only from West 8th through West 9th Street. It also runs from West 3rd to West 6th Streets. A portion of Laurel Avenue from between 7th and 8th Street was closed and abandoned in 2013 and incorporated into the development of the University Square RAO. The procedure for closure and abandonment of streets or right of ways is specified in Title 16, Chapter 4 of the municipal code. There are four parcels contiguous with the portion of the public street proposed for closure and abandonment. We have received petitions from all four property owners requesting closure and abandonment of this section of Laurel Avenue. The request has been reviewed by applicable city departments. The water quality control department indicates that there's an existing two-inch line that would need to be disconnected or an easement retained. The gas department indicates that a utility easement 20 feet in width would need to be retained for an existing two-inch gas main located on the west side of Laurel Avenue. The planning commission is recommending for approval of the closure and abandonment and for declaration as surplus property with conveyance of right of way to adjoining property owners in compliance with the municipal code, subject to the retention of utility easements as determined necessary. And the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you. During our public hearing portion, would anyone like to speak on this matter? No? All right. That'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion on this?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7F, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Open Heart Rescue Incorporated for use of city facility located at 2105 West Jackson Street. Ms. Councilman Henry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had a request from Open Heart Rescue to, for a short-term lease of the, what we call the old animal shelter. I think the terms of the lease, if you could put them up on the screen, I'll just highlight them with you, just briefly. The leasee accepts the conditions of the property as is and assumes risk of any and all deficiencies that may exist in the property. If the need is less than eight weeks, the lease may be terminated by either party and rent owed only for the time period occupied. Leasee's responsible for mowing, routine maintenance, and custodial work. A leasee's responsible for electric, water, gas, and any utilities required during the lease period. City retains the unlimited right to enter, monitor, use, and for continued use of the crematory. The leasee names the city as an additional insured with limits of $1 million and does not enter the property until it's, this requirement is met, and the leasee shall pay the city $100 a week with the first and last week's rent paid in advance. And having read that, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute that agreement.
So, we have a motion. I will second it so we can have discussion. Would anyone like to speak to this matter? Again, identify yourself at the lectern, please.
Barbara Reynolds.
Yes, ma'am.
Heathrow Drive. This is another animal shelter. This would make three, and I think we have one abuse center for women. And recently, I read in the paper that there's something like 10 times as many animal shelters for animals, abused animals and whatever, neglected, as there are for people. And I'd just like to have you think about that as you, and I have no opposition to this, but I just want to state that I think we need to consider more services for people who are abused or neglected or need some help, because I don't think we have enough in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Yes. Please come to the lectern and identify yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Weston. I am president of Friends of Cookville Putnam County Animals. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity founded in 2004, and we act as a support group for the animal shelter. Tonight, I represent our Friends Board of, our Friends Board of Directors, as well as supporters, donors, and volunteers at the shelter to oppose this item on the agenda. If you take the emotionalism out of the situation of these dogs that need a home, and you look at the big picture, there are many, many, many counties in our state and also throughout the South that have a pet overpopulation problem. Pet overpopulation meaning too many pets and too few adopters. So, that's a key thing to remember, because adopters are a precious commodity in any adoption and any animal shelter rescue. Our city and county can be really proud of what we've done in terms of tackling this, this issue of pet overpopulation. We've got a wonderful, state-of-the-art, new animal shelter that has been paid for by tax dollars and also by a lot of donations, private donations. Up to $750,000 worth of Putnam County money went into this in terms of private donations. So, we want this shelter to work, and it is working. Right now, we have more, we have more adoptions than we have, we have more adoptions than we have animals coming in, so it's the right balance. Every day, we get calls from out of county, especially Jackson County and a lot of different other counties, that ask, can we help them? Can we take their animals? Well, as animal lovers, yes, we would love to help them, but the truth is, we can't. We can't save them all. We can't help them all. Best way we can help them is actually what we're doing, is working with DeKalb County, working with Cumberland County, working with White County, to help them form friends groups and give them guidelines on how to do what, what we've done here. Right now, our, our shelter only accepts Putnam County animals, and I just see our shelter director, Daryl Webb, has just arrived, so he's going to speak a little bit to that, too. Basically, if we open the door to the old shelter, to putting animals in there, it will create several problems. It will cause confusion to people who thought, well, I didn't think there were animals there. I thought the shelter moved the animals. It will be disheartening for a lot of people who actually tried their hardest to get animals out of there. It will encourage other rescue groups to bring in animals from other counties if they see that we're doing this and we're opening this up, and it will dilute that precious pool of adopters that we have that, right now, are going to the shelter. So, you know, the irony of it is, too, that although Open Heart Rescue has an open heart and they want to help, they tend to refer to our shelter as a municipal kill shelter, and that is not helpful. So, it doesn't make a lot of sense for another group of animals to be in that shelter when it's not going to help our shelter. With that, I'd like to introduce our director, Daryl Webb, who is going to have a few words, if that's okay.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Daryl Webb, the shelter director, also a reserve deputy with the sheriff's department, and I would like to speak today regarding this. Mostly what I'm going to talk about is animal hoarding and hoarding situations that we've had. Open Heart Rescue labels themselves as a no-kill rescue, and they, like Ms. Weston said, they label us as a kill, municipal kill facility. Well, this is taken from PETA's website. Everyone knows... Everyone knows who PETA is. PETA is the, "Don't wear fur, don't kill animals." That's who PETA is, and this is taken directly from their website. In my hand, I have hundreds of cases across the U.S. from 2015 back to 2008, all where these no-kill animal shelters and no-kill rescues have had hoarding cases, alleged, some of them are actually convicted. This is taken directly from their website. When a no-kill animal shelters and rescue groups are filled to capacity, which is almost always, they are left with two options: turn away more animals than they take in, or warehouse animals, often in substandard, filthy, or severely crowded conditions, for weeks, months, or even years on end. Most, if not all, of the animals who are turned away from such facilities still face untimely deaths, just not at these facilities. Instead, they are cruelly killed by people who don't want them, they're dumped on the road sides and left to die from starvation, being hit by cars, spend their short lives homeless, unwanted, and producing more litters of animals for whom no homes exist. Now, that's very important. Bringing in animals from other counties to try to adopt in our county is going to dilute the pool for adopters. We're going to have le, um, less homes for our animals. This last paragraph from them is very important. "The lucky ones are taken to well-run, open-admission animal shelters, where they're either fined a well-screened, permanent home, or are painlessly euthanized in the arms of professionally-trained, compassionate people." And then again, here's some of the no-kill animal shelter failures that made headlines, and like I said, in my packet are hundreds of cases of this, including some from Tennessee. Now, before I go any further, I would like to say that we are not saying that Open Heart is hoarding animals. That is not what the case is. Open Heart is a rescue. We pride ourselves in the shelter of partnering with rescues. But bringing in animals from another county, especially this many animals, and going to a substandard facility, is cruel to the animals, and it borders on animal cruelty, and animal hoarding, for that matter. From the ASPCA website, there's some frequently asked questions about animal hoarding, and what is the definition of animal hoarding? And there's some criteria to follow here. Now, these are not perfect criteria, but they do match. If you have more than the typical number of companion animals...
Please, please wrap up in about 15 seconds, okay?
Do what?
If you would, please wrap up in about 15 seconds.
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you very much.
More than typical number of companion animals, and Open Heart prides themselves as also a sanctuary where they take in animals for good. They become companion animals, that's more than a typical household. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other comments? Please identify yourself, and you two will have...
I'll pop through, and I'll speak, uh, first, on behalf of my wife. I'm sure she'll speak, but, uh, we can certainly appreciate, I can, what, uh, what the Humane Society does here. We certainly support them. Uh, I don't know, I really don't see where, what they're talking about has anything to do with what we're talking about. We're not asking what Cheryl, and she will explain this, what she's looking for is a short-term time, and she's not looking for these animals to be adopted by people here in Putnam County. What she has done, there was a, a, a facility in Lewisburg, I believe, and it fell on hard times. It had 38 dogs. She has taken it upon herself, and they have adopted all of the dogs, but I think 10. Anyway, a certain amount of dogs, and so what she wants to do is to be able to use this until she can get the other, she's already has other rescues, other places in the state. There, there've been people that have come in from Georgia that have gotten these dogs, that have been people that have come in from Nashville. So we're not, and we're certainly not hoarding. If, those of you that know me, know how I feel about this, because it falls on me from a financial standpoint, and also, I know where her heart is. So we're just talking about a short-term thing to help, uh, situation somewhere else. We're all in this together. We're all in this to save dogs, and I can't understand why they're opposed to it at all, but that's, that's all I'll say.
Please restart the clock there for the, for her.
My name is Cheryl Vick, and I am the founder and owner of Open Heart Rescue. I am a 501(c)(3), just as our animal shelter is, okay? I certainly am not a hoarder. Right now, I do have 36 dogs at my farm, okay? And some of those, six of those are sanctuary dogs. What this situation is, it was a hoarding situation. This family, it started out with 38 dogs, three horses, and a pot-belly pig. They fell on hard times. The husband is disabled, cannot work. His wife was working two jobs. She lost a job. They've been evicted from their home, and the property owners are telling them, either get the animals out, or they're going to be killed. These are animals that have already been saved from other slaughterhouse kill facilities. They're up to date on their shots. We're getting, uh, vetting records on them. They've all been spayed and neutered. I have five other rescues. Big Fluffy Dog in Nashville, which is an extremely reputable no-kill rescue. Music City Animal Shelter in Nashville. Partners for Pet, which is out of Georgia, an out-of-state rescue, is coming to Tennessee aid. We've had an awful lot of really bad situations in Tennessee. Hits of news, and I mean, big-time news. Uh, there was a really bad situation in Overton County. We've had one in Coffee County just recently. All I'm asking, I have, I have found homes for all of these, with the exception of 12. I'm still waiting on rescues to commit. All I need is a place to house these dogs. They are not going to anywhere in here. I'm going to make sure that they do not take up any space for any potential adopter in, in Putnam County, okay? Although in rescue, and I'm going to get very emotional about this, in rescue, we don't have borders or boundaries. If I see a dog in the Kroger parking lot that is desperately in need, or if I see a dog that's six inches across the Putnam County line, I'm going to help that dog. I'm just asking for eight weeks, that's all. And I'm hoping that I can get the animals out of there before eight weeks. If I can get them all out in a week, I will do that certainly, and I will vacate the property. I have the required insurance that, that you need. I have the policy right here. I've done everything that you've asked me to do. That's all I'm asking, is eight weeks. Please, just let me have the facility. It's vacant. It's empty. It's sitting there, and I just don't understand why they are opposing it. I really, really don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please identify yourself.
I'm Sarah Holick, and I'm also a Friends Board member, and I also have a rescue, uh, in, that is a upper Cumberland rescue. I can understand Cheryl's point of view very, very well. Um, we all have a love for the animals, and that's why we're all here. But certainly, the next eight weeks, we're in what, what's considered puppy and kitten season. And even though it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not just about Putnam County borders or Cookville borders, um, the pool of adopters comes from the whole upper Cumberland. Now that we have a wonderful facility, um, all over middle Tennessee, people are coming to adopt from us. And it was my understanding, and I'm not sure if this is correct, that most of these dogs are pit bull, or pit bull mixes, or maybe bully breeds. Uh, we love pit bulls, but unfortunately, um, often the public doesn't. And already, the city of Sparta has outlawed, outlawed pit bulls within their city limits, so that even further limits the adoptability of pit bulls and pit bull mixes. Um, so that's obviously a concern for us. Um, but, you know, as a rescue, I can understand, uh, your love and your drive, um, but it's just not anything that's, seems to be healthy for the city, for the animal shelter. And I also understand how hard it is to get pit bulls out, even to other rescues, because I've, I've worked on that end of it. And unfortunately, a handshake and, uh, a verbal commitment isn't always a solid commitment, so I've seen the problems that eight weeks is a very, very difficult timeframe to get that quantity, and also those breeds of dogs, uh, to rescues into safe havens. Um, so that's, that would be very, very difficult to attain.
Thank you very much. Just one more, just one more comment.
If I cannot place the dogs in other rescues or foster homes, eight weeks is going to give me enough time to build additional kennels out at my farm, and I will take the dogs there. There is not going to be any, um, concern. Uh, uh, no, I'm not going to be going past eight weeks, anyway. But, you know, it doesn't matter what breed the dogs are, uh, you know, I deal mostly with the pit mixes, because they are harder to place. So, you know, that's, I certainly do not consider that, you know, an issue. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, council members, would, would any of the council members like to speak to this?
I'm Doty Laramore, and I'm also on the board. One thing that I want to point out, and I know that all the council members received a copy of the petition that Ms. Vick has put online, and there is a, um, a specific thing that she has put there that says, donate the vacant animal shelter to Open Heart Rescue Incorporated. And there is a place for you to vote, if you think that that's a good thing. And, and in this petition, she berated Linda Weston so badly, that it, it just looks awful that she doesn't mind criticizing and calling us a kill shelter, and yet she wants to lease a facility from the city that she's already turned her back on. And of, of this, her goal was 10,000 signatures. As, at last count, it was 1,239, and at least half of them came from all over the world, because this is, goes out to all of these people that are associated, or whatever. And so, and there were some from Tennessee, but, and, but all over the United States, and all over the world. And I just think, I, I just think that, um, you know, it's really not a good idea, because her goal is to get the shelter out there, not just to rent it.
Okay, thank you. Um, council members, would anyone like to ask any questions, or have any comments among...
You're going to close the public session?
It's not actually a public hearing. This is just an agenda item, so we can have conversation back and forth.
Uh, we had a meeting, Dwight, was it in January? We met with, uh, Ms. Vick, and Ms. Weston, and, uh, then-manager, uh, Mr. Shipley, I think Mike was there, Rick Woods, and we had the discussion. And I thought we'd put this to rest. We did, the city did not want to, uh, abandon this property and put it up for sale, nor did we want to rent it and be a landlord. Uh, I still feel that way. Uh, I respect your passion. You have a, apparently, a tremendous commitment for this. Uh, but I just, the, the new animal shelter, which we have a lot of emotion and money involved in, I think they're turning the corner. Uh, the volunteers per, per month are approaching 1,000 hours, um, you know? It's a facility, it, it is so outstanding that it, you know, they're, the number of animals put down are diminished greatly. The adoptions are up. Uh, it's all positive. I knew it would be. The, the number of volunteers increased, the animals, uh, being adopted increased, because it has much better curb appeal. The old facility was so dilapidated, uh, it was an eyesore, uh, it was detrimental to the animals there, and the people that work there. So, I'm still on that position. I do not want to lease this property. I'm, I'm sorry, I just have to disagree with you respectfully.
Do you want to have any comments?
I've seen the animal shelter developed for the last 16 years, from something that wasn't much, to, to a state-of-the-art shelter, and it's impressed me with the community, and the dedication of the volunteers, and the people in the community, of private and public, both the county and the city, getting involved in making this from something that wasn't too much, into something that, to me, I hate to use the word, but it's world-class, end quote. So, I think that we've got a good situation here. I personally have a, a, um, a, a dog that was a rescue 15 years ago, and we've loved her, and, and I hate to see animals that don't, can't find places to stay in homes, but to me, it would be going, um, backward to go into something where we didn't have state-of-the-art care of these animals. So, um, I, I respect both sides, but I had an open mind coming into here, but, uh, what I've heard tonight makes me think that our primary aim should be care and maintenance of our world-class animal shelter.
Just, I wanted to say, uh, I, I know, I know Councilman Henry's heart, admire, admire him, uh, for that, and I know he's, I know he's just been, he's reaching out and trying to help, but I'm, Dwight, I'm not, I'm not going to vote, uh, for the lease agreement. Uh, maybe a little bit, I appreciate what my other council members have said, but I, I had the opportunity to spend some time on the internet, reading some of the, kind of the, uh, the words, uh, the words between, uh, both these groups. They were pretty, they were pretty harsh, uh, and it was definitely, definitely presented an adversarial situation. That, that in and of itself is what bothers me, this adversarial relationship that's set up. Uh, although I admire somebody would go out, go out of their way to try to, uh, uh, put together a no-kill shelter, and add it, the passion involved with that, but, uh, for me, to vote for this, I would have to, I'd lean to see some fences mended bef, prior to that. Uh, I, I just don't see that after reading some of the words that have been said. So, uh, I'm, as, I agree with Councilman Womack, that we, we do have, we do have a world-class facility. I'm not afraid to use those words. We do have a world-class facility, and, uh, I would like to see, uh, Open Hearts be of more of a support for it than more of an adversarial situation.
Thank you. I, I would just say, I appreciate the passion of the Vicks, and, and obviously what they care about. We do have a world-class facility. It's a great facility. And I think at the end of the day, when you boil all of this down, and, um, while there obviously is a need for, uh, what she's trying to do, my issue would be, if, if even one of those animals were adopted within Putnam County, you know, our, our citizens, city and county residents, have upwards of $2 million in that facility. And if one, if even one of those animals were adopted, and it prevented one of the animals that, that the money was spent from this community to build that shelter caused that animal not to get adopted, then I, I couldn't represent it, because, uh, at the end of the day, we, we have to be, um, responsible to the citizens, the dogs, the whatever that's in our community, that, that this shelter was for. And so, um, I, I too will have to be against this.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, apparently, I'm the voice in the wilderness on this, but I do feel strongly about it for this reason. And let me, let me say also, uh, to Linda and to all the, oh, yeah, there's no one's prouder than I of the new facility we have. I was there at grand opening, and we did a radio show, and had folks on, on a regular basis, and I'm happy and proud. But let me tell you what I don't believe. I don't believe that this action in any way hurts, hinders, or harms our state-of-the-art facility that I'm so very proud of. And I, I would make three important points about that. One, we've got to decide who the city is. You know, the city's not City Hall. We're not the city. We're members of, we're residents of the city. The city are the people who live here. The city's the businesses. The city's the nonprofits, and, and they, they effectively own, you know, the, the animal shelters. I mean, it belongs to the city. So when we have a legitimate, regardless of personality conflicts, or words that's going back and forth, and that, that's sad, and that's unfortunate, and that, that, that words, words are containers, and they do contain things, and they do last, and they do hurt, they do lift up, but those, that is not even the real issue. We have a legitimate, we have a legitimate nonprofit coming before us and saying, in an emergency basis, on a short term, we want to use this facility that's not being used now at all for anything. We are willing to, we're willing to meet the demands of the contract. We're willing to do that, and we are, we're, we've got the insurance, we've paid the money, we'll pay the electric, we'll do everything else. To me, that's a legitimate request. It's a short term. It's no more than eight weeks. And, and so, it's, and, and they're part of the city, and it solves a problem. So that, that, to me, that doesn't violate anything, any lease we may have done, because, because you can justify a legitimate entity in our city coming forth and asking for that. Now, as it relates to the animals, granted, these animals are not born in Putnam County. They were not born in Putnam County. We can't help where they were born, but we can help if they die or not real soon, and they're going to die in a few days. And, and as a matter of fact, but they're, they're willing to say, at no cost, at no risk to the city, we will, they're not asking for anything. In fact, what we're going to do... In fact, what we're going to do, we haven't really voted on it, but if this came to pass, and apparently it's not, but if it did, we're going to take that $800 a week and, and put it into the new animal shelter that we're all proud of. And that's, that was the discussion. That was the consensus to, to make, to make that happen. And the third matter is, is, is the competition, the competitive factor. You know, we're talking about, folks, we're talking about twelve dogs, and we're talking about a few weeks. Now, I'm not going to be convinced I don't think that that's going to confuse anybody. That's not going to dishearten anybody. That's not going to be competition. That's like me setting up a yard sale and, and having it at my house, and somebody come and say, "You're competing with Walmart." You know, it's, it, if we look at our state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art here, and eight and twelve animals for no more than eight weeks, and it will be done in eight weeks, regardless of how many are still there. If they're adopted in two weeks, it'll be gone in two weeks. And no cost to the city, no risk to the city. In fact, we could end up with some money that we could put in the coffers. That won't disillusion anybody. That won't harm anybody on a one-time emergency basis. That won't confuse anybody. That will not hurt long-term or short-term our state-of-the-art animal shelter. It just will not. Let's put personalities aside, and let's put, and let's talk about those three issues here. And I am a little bit disappointed that the animal community, you'd think this would be something that they could rally around and come together on, because it isn't. At the end of the day, it's about protecting animals, and, and it sort of reminds me of the church I went to as a first-time visitor once, and I sit down in a pew where no one was, and a lady came up to me and said, "Excuse me, that's my pew." And I, I wanted to say, "Well, you know, you weren't, I got here first, and I didn't see your name on it." You know, I didn't say that. What she should have said is, "Hey, good to see you. What's your name? Happy, good to have you visiting here and sat somewhere else, and if you wanted to sit there next time, you should have got there earlier." It sounds like, it sounds like we're fighting over a pew here, where the animal community ought to come together. And I have great respect for what Linda's done. Nobody can deny what she's done for animal causes in this board, but this will not hurt this facility, long-term or short-term. It's about saving lives of animals. It's about working together as a community, and it's about doing, in my view, what's the right thing. And gentlemen, regardless of how you vote, know this, I want to thank those of you as councilmen or as friends, reasonable people can disagree over things, but I feel strongly that this, this doesn't, this does no harm to our state-of-the-art facility, long-term or short, and that's why I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One last comment. Dr. Reynolds said that we don't have the, you know, facilities to take care of abused spouses, women, you know, in our community. We've got Genesis House, and I support that tremendously, and I think that everyone on the council, and I'm sure everyone in the audience would support an entity such as Genesis House to take care of abused women. So I think that should...
We just did.
I know.
And our budget works.
Right, and our budget, we're contributing toward Genesis House. We're, we're doing that, so.
Mr. Mayor, could I just address one thing?
She raised her hand first, and then you can, yes. Couple more comments, and then we'll wrap this up. Please identify yourself. Three minutes.
My name is Carolyn Pitsen, and, and thinking about all this, the main reason, one of the, probably the main reason that we built the new shelter, and the city built the new shelter, is the fact that it was substandard. We've already said that. So we took the animals out. To me, there's no wisdom of putting the animals, any animals, regardless of where they came from, back into a building, when we've already said that it's not worth anything of, of housing animals.
Thank you. Mr. Vic, did you have another comment, sir?
Just one, one thing. You said, I think Cheryl made it quite clear that there would be no animals that would be adopted in Putnam County, and you were saying you wouldn't want this to happen and it take the place of one that would be in Putnam County. That's not the case.
My, yes, sir. My exact comment was, "It would be a shame if one happened to." I, I do recognize what she said. I was making the assumption, I was just making the comment, "If one happened to be." I understand what she said. I certainly wasn't disputing what her comment was about, that there would be none.
And if I might just take thirty seconds to address that last comment. The animal shelter, as the old animal shelter, in the condition that it's in, is certainly better than where the animals are now. So, yeah, it's certainly not what we have, and, but it's better than what they have now. And again, we're just asking for something very short-term to help somebody out. And, you know, we just really request that y'all reconsider, that you consider this, and just give us eight weeks, and that's all we're asking for.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Just one quick one, Mayor. Yes, it is substandard. It is short-term, but it's better than the death they're going to face in a few days. It's better than that. It's a better option.
All council members, please vote.
Excuse me. I need to change my vote. Please.
Go again, please. Four, no. One, yes. Motion failed.
Seven G, consider awarding bid for one utility vehicle. Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, we solicited bids for a utility vehicle. This vehicle will be utilized for special events and directed patrol. As you can see there, we did receive two bidders, lowest bidder being Nora Supercycle. The price that, on that bid is $15,657.94. There is a stipulation on the bid that we would also receive any rebates in addition to this bid. I've been told that the rebate on this is $600 for the month of May, so I would still recommend approving the up-to amount for the bid amount, just in case that didn't come to fruition. But, but I expect it will be $600 cheaper than this, and I would recommend your approval.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Thank you.
Five, yes votes. Motion carried.
Seven H, consider approval to purchase a replacement pump for the Booger Swamp Sewer Pumping Station. Mr. Kelly?
Mayor and council, we recently experienced a pump failure at our pump station in Booger Swamp. After pulling and inspecting it, it was determined that pricing the parts, the replacement parts, that it would be cheap, just as cheap to go ahead and purchase a replacement pump and salvage the parts off of that. It's a sole-source per, uh, bid, or a sole-source purchase from the supplier. It's $25,457. Would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Anyone like to speak to the motion? All vote? Thank you.
Yes votes. Motion carried.
Seven I, hold a public hearing on the six-month progress report for plan of services for the Hall Bennett Road annexation area. Mr. Mills?
Mayor and council members, we're required by state law to provide a report six months after we annex an area, and we're required to hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. The Hall Bennett Road area was annexed in October of last year. We recently prepared and had published in Herald Citizen a six-month progress report for this area. Here's the more detailed location. This is basically surrounded by the academy site. Report indicates that police, fire protection, solid waste collection, natural gas, electric, street maintenance, street signs, planning, zoning, and recreational facilities are provided as specified. Sanitary sewer has not yet been provided. The plan of services specifies that sewer service will be provided when economically feasible and based on the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine the expansion of sanitary sewer service in the uncertain portions of the present corporate limits. Street lighting has not yet been provided. The plan of services provides that the electrical service in the annexation area will be, continue to be provided by Upper Cumberland, and the city will pay the co-op for the provision of street lighting, and will request that the co-op provide within one year after the effective date of annexation. Plans are currently being prepared for the development of the installation of the street lighting. And finally, the plan of services specifies that water service will continue to be provided by the Cookville Bolt Dock Utility District until such time as a service area can be obtained by the city of Cookville, and the service area has not yet been obtained. So that is the plan of services report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any comments on that? All righty. At this time, we'll have a time for hearing of citizens that wish to address the council on non-agenda items. Would anyone like to address the council on any matter? Yes, ma'am. Couple points of order. Again, identify yourself, Ms. Reynolds, Dr. Reynolds, and a statement of three minutes may be what made matters of general relevance. Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Bennals.
Yes, ma'am.
Heathwood Drive. I really came down to support the senior center, because I'm spending a lot of time there lately, and I see how many people are there. I mean, it is, it's, there are so many folks that spend their whole day there. They have lunch, they're there all day. It needs to be expanded. I know you're dealing with some budget on that, and I'm assuming that you're going to be doing something for them, but I just want to say, that place is just exploding. It's wonderful. And you think of the stress level it's reducing for so many people who come there, who aren't going into the hospitals, who aren't homeless on the street. They're coming there. So I hope that in the future, as you have opportunities to support the senior center, that you will. We need more parking, need more space, and so I just wanted to make a statement that I, I'm there, and lots of people I see are there all day long. So I thank you.
We're glad that it is being used, and we have had budget work sessions, and we are looking at matters of improvement to, to the facility, not, not expansion at this moment, but certainly some improvements to make it a more functional and workable facility. So, anyone else like to speak? This is National Police Week. Certainly want to thank all of our local police officers, both our city department and our county sheriff's office, THP, and, and all those that, that serve and protect us, and for the job they do. I know there's national media, you'll a lot of time to see some, some negative light, but it's, we're blessed and thankful in this community to have a great law enforcement folks that, to give their time. Yes, ma'am. You're speaking more than Mr. Mills. This is not, we're not, last one. You can have one more comment.
Did you know it was Nurses Week as well?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for, thank you for our nurses who, yes, ma'am, thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that, and it is, and we're very thankful for our nurses and our hospital and, and our community, so. Any other, do I have any of council?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, as a board member of the senior center, thank you, Dr. Reynolds. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I've got something to say, too. As a participant out at the senior center of their exercise and balance program, I've noticed it grow from about thirty participants to about over fifty participants in the year that I've been going out there, so it's growing.
Yeah, I appreciate Councilmen Henry and Mollmack, who, I mean, I've, I've supported the, the senior center since I've served as a county commissioner, but I, I really appreciate you guys' work on this, because you guys are really bringing a, an advocacy to the council about that, and I appreciate it. Thanks a lot, guys.
It's just because we're old.
I'm not going to say that, but I'll let you.
All right. Yes, sir. One, one final?
I'm Boyd Klein, and I'm not real popular with the city fathers and zoning, because I'm familiar with a piece of property that had the great potential, great potential that developed into an extended Genesis House. And the zoning of the city fathers, that's all of you, made a hard decision not to allow the owner to move in a direction of that possibility. And I don't know if I have to, I, I'm pretty sure you're aware of what I'm talking about. I think the street is Carr Avenue, or it's in that general vicinity. And it formerly was a home for youth, and it was a state-owned building, and it was a, it was constructed as a facility with a great big kitchen in it, with high-tech hardware within the facility. And our wonderful zoning board decided that it could only be extended with two apartments. And I'm not quite sure of the number of units that were, were within that building, but I think there was nineteen individual apartments, and they were huge, with windows in all of them. And I question, I know you guys have your ultimate plan, and you've already put a noose around my neck once, but you'll not get me twice, okay? But my point is that as councilmen, and...
We're, we're...
...taxpayers. And I think we have a right, as property owners, to not be shoved around by you people. And I've, I've got a good axe to grind, and, you know, it'll take me another hour to tell the story.
Well, you have about a minute.
I'm not going to give it to you. I'll be ahead of that.
Well, we're not going to, you're not going to, sir, you're not going to personally attack up here. I can tell you that right now, okay?
Genesis House had a possibility.
That's not going to happen.
Genesis House had a possibility there.
Yes, sir.
And I would have liked to have thought, maybe in the future, at least we would give more consideration to women that have been abused, okay?
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? We will adjourn.